And, uh, Comptroller doing the prayer.
Uh, is this, is this opera? Okay. Opera money we can.
You ready?
You ready? Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We gonna call our meeting daughter. If we will, we gonna ask you to put your phone vibrator or turn them off. We go, uh, ask, uh, building ground directly to do, uh, prayer. And ask, uh, Comptroller to, uh, do our pledge. Drew?
Father Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for letting us come here today. Pray that you would watch over us and let us to duck this business to the best of our ability. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen, man. Comptroller, the son?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Come on, get my eyes on here. Riley, go ahead, get started.
Mr. President, you have before you the May the second board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, please approve said minutes.
The chairman?
Oh, excuse me, would you have, would you have a, uh?
There's one change.
A change?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, in the section relating to the, uh, Gluckstat transfer of vehicles. All the wording in the, uh, language is correct, but at the end, the minutes characterize the process as a donation. And as the board knows, we, we can't donate vehicles or anything else. There's a process where we declare a surplus and declare it at some value. And then, once the value is paid, our service is given, uh, then we can transfer the vehicles. So instead of the word donation, I would suggest the word, uh, convey or transfer. And then it'd be fine.
Mike, can the, the board can identify any value that sees fit even less than market value?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So with that word transfer or convey?
Declare it as some value.
Okay.
Even though it's not market value.
Okay.
Or it could be, it could be services that Gluckstat would render to the county.
Okay.
Uh, so that could be done, but something, it can't be just be a donation.
Okay.
The word transfer or better than the word convey?
Conveyance of the word donation.
Alright, so it's transfers or convey instead of donation.
Whichever word.
If the board would approve said minutes with the word, changing the word from donate and relates to the Gluckstat, uh,
After the process, we will convey the vehicles.
Conveyance to convey. Then I would ask the board to approve said minutes with that wording.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Jasmine.
Now, that would, would that approve in all your minutes or just changed in that one thing?
That's the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we moving right along. Uh, concerned citizen, Lisa Jones. Lisa Jones.
Mr. President, I have not, uh, seen Lisa Jones this morning. Are you ready to move on?
In, in, on there, okay.
Are you ready to move on?
Yes.
James McGivney. James McGivney.
James, what now?
McGivney.
Alright.
Phone up front, sir, to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Hey, James.
Yeah, how you guys doing? Alright. I have a lot on, uh, Catley Road and Luburtia. Used to be Falls Crossing. I was on a corner lot for many, forever. I've been there forty-three years. The road was there probably over a hundred years, Luburtia. And I came up here a few years ago when they built Falls Crossing. They put up a fence to block me off Luburtia. I talked to the supervisor. He said, "Well, I don't see how they can put up a fence to block you off of property. Let me talk to the, uh, developer." He talked to the developer. He wouldn't talk to me again. I went to his office and caught him. He said, "I talked to the developer and we don't see any problem with that fence." I came to the board supervision meeting, told them the same thing. Did they get a permit? Yes, they got a permit. How'd they get a permit? Nobody knows. Uh, they instructed the city, uh, county attorney to investigate and let me know. The county attorney never would talk to me again, still hadn't, whatever. Now, they've moved the road, Luburtia, taking me completely off the road. I suppose it was a county road. Nobody said a word to me about it. I'm just letting y'all know how I feel about it. Anyway, uh, and also, when they build these subdivisions, the sewer mains, the pumps, all the boxes, Seafire, AT&amp;T, are not put in front of the subdivisions. They're jammed on somebody else. I have three, I have Seafire, I have Comcast, I have AT&amp;T box against my property. I have a sewer pump and a manhole cover. And, uh, well, this stuff goes on all the time. I'm not making the county any money. I don't know who my supervisor is. It really doesn't matter because I really don't care. I've never asked the county, I have asked the county for something. I have to, used to call them when they wouldn't cut the right away, but that's their, that's their job.
James, what, what is your question or what's, what could we hit with?
How can I get my road back?
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on, that's, that's District Two, correct? Uh, Tim, come up to the mic.
But, Tim, Tim will.
Tim, can you, uh?
Yeah, man.
Tim, can you research, see if Luburtia is a county road?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna have to do some research on this before I can give anybody an answer because I'm good, you know, I'm just caught cold on this.
Yeah.
Can you have, can you have the answer back in two weeks?
Sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Anything else you need, sir?
I mean, every, everything is done without consulting the people that are involved.
Uh, Tim was gonna look into it and get back.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look into it.
I'm, I'm no, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll happen. I appreciate it, guys.
Hey, got a question.
One question.
You got it.
Your lot.
Sir?
Your lot, your, your lot is on the corner of,
Right, yes, sir.
On the corner of Luburtia.
Yes, sir.
And Catley.
Right.
So you have access to your lot from Catley?
I still have a little road on Luburtia. I used to plant down in, I've got a little place down there. I used to plant all the time. The road is still there. It's obvious now. Since they, part of the road, uh, fence has been taken down. The road is still there. And this has been there forever.
What happened, uh, I, I think that when they, they moved that entrance
Right.
For both, so that
Yes, sir.
They ended up, uh, abandoning that small portion of Luburtia.
I'm sure they did. Don't I have a say so?
Well, you also, uh, should be, uh, would be given, I think that the land, uh, being the adjoining land on it to the abandoned road, that piece of property, you could probably petition it, uh, to say that that, at least half of that property should be yours.
Well.
Abandoned. I don't know that, but, uh, our engineers gonna, gonna, gonna do some research and find out what's going on.
I'm sure. I've been there before, okay. I just wanted to let y'all know how I feel about it and, uh.
I know, you've been here before.
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, I, I don't get anybody's business. I don't tell anybody what to do. So whatever.
Alright.
I'm kinda out of place here, you guys.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Alright, the shell, do you have more concerns, says?
One more, Mr. President. Shelby Brooks, Shelby Brooks.
Shelby Brooks. Mr. Brooke, come on, tell what road you live on, what you got for us this morning?
Morning. Uh, I have a property on John Day Road.
Alright.
Um, it's, it's two-sided. I parceled it out in, uh, October to, um, as, um, for a shop in a, um, used car lot. Um, behind it, right, right, right at the edge of my property, they fixed the drain, they put a new, uh, drain in the road. But it's a creek that, that the drain come from. It runs from my property back east and it goes around to Sweet White Road. And what, right, right where the bend is, it split and go this way and then it turns behind my property this way.
I, tell, tell me, tell me exactly where you at on John Day Road?
When you, when you, when you up sixteen, take the right, like you're going back to Pat Lucky. The old Joe family house right there, uh,
Burned.
Yeah. And see, okay, I already had the, the, the family house, but Mr. Singleton had the house that burned. That's the property that I parcel, because at first I joined them together. Then I parcel the other one back, uh, for the E nine one one. The house is listed on two eighty. The other property is gonna be called two seventy-six. And the, the, the creek runs behind both of them back to Sweet White, because those Sweet White drops down that hill. And it'll, it'll, it'll washed out in between both properties. Come from the one side of the creek, it, it don't connect anymore. And it, and it's flooding me on that side though. I can't even put my shop up or nothing because it's, it's flooding out. And I saw the road crew, uh, with Vadya and them and I, I, I saw them on Lotvia doing some work. I addressed them about it, but he said he can't just come and do it, you know, it had to be approved by the board, so that's why I'm here.
No representative here from the road department.
Cornelius is on vacation.
Vacation.
Signing out, he's here.
This probably could just hold till next meeting because right now, there no one here from the road department.
Okay.
And I know the area you talking about is not specific
Okay.
on what's going on.
Okay.
Uh, could you, have you talked to Cornelius?
No.
Talked to Cornelius, you'll be back tomorrow, Shelton?
Uh, I think he will be back Thursday.
Thursday. Uh, talk to Cornelius Thursday.
Cornelius who?
Bacon.
Cornelius Baker?
Yeah.
Bacon?
Yeah, B.A.C.
Oh, in, okay.
And I will talk to Vardell, uh,
Okay.
sometime today.
Okay.
And give a little more detail.
Okay.
And hope we can work it out, uh, for you not to have to come back
Okay.
next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and give me your name again now.
Shelby Brooks.
And, uh, give your phone number to, uh, Shelton there.
Okay.
I don't want to give your phone number on where everybody might be calling.
Alright, thank y'all.
Alright, thank you here. Any other concerns, says?
That's it, Mr. President.
Alright, we gonna move to scholarship presentation. Do we have anyone?
Yes.
Here. I believe we have both, uh, parties here.
Alright. I don't have a name with nobody here, so whoever you choose first, you, you doing it, little Eddie?
First recipient is William Jackson Nesby. He is the son of Amy Nesby. She works with, uh, Judge, um, Judge.
Amy's here?
Alright.
Somebody gonna get some pictures here?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, do you want to present the checks?
I want the picture, we took in the picture too. Yeah, alright. Uh, that's the camera right up there. We gonna take that there.
The next one is Ms. Griffin. She is the daughter of Greta Handed, Greta works, uh, with the Sheriff Department. Mr. Griffin, this is, uh,
Okay, one check. Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
What, what do you go to?
Up on ours.
Ours?
Hey.
The system? Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
What's next? Alright, get back up here.
Yeah, consent items, Mr. President. Consent items.
Alright, down to our consent items now.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Alright, I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Carl Banks about our watershed project.
Yeah, we have some, uh, I guess, house cleaning, uh, things we need to be doing with the watershed project so we can move forward.
Banks, we don't have your microphone where we can hear you.
No, I don't have my microphone.
Up to you.
You know. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I always want to hear you.
I was, Attorney Espe, do, um, did we get that agreement yet? One of the things.
Not yet.
So there's a few things that, uh, we need to be doing today. I see y'all.
Uh, good morning, board.
Good morning.
So the board went to DC and met with the National NRCS, National Resource and Conservation Service. We learned that visit at, uh, the county is local sponsor of a project called WFPO, Watershed Flooding Protection, I forget what those stands for. We received twenty million dollars for this project and that money's been obligated. So obligated, obligated money means it's ours, it's for the project. It's been set aside and the only way we don't, we won't get it is if we don't do the project. So thank you for being, the money's not obligated, so.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, certain things we have to do as local sponsor. We have to register the project in the federal register, which I hope you'll authorize Shelton to do today. That project, it's a number, so that's our project between us and the NRCS. And we have to sign a cooperative agreement for design, for planning and construction. And once we register, we will ask for the agreement. And we'll get the agreement, you'll authorize us to sign it and then we'll be underway. Uh, there is a local committee that'll be meeting, that Mr. Banks has already, you've already set that up. And then we'll be underway. It's possible that this project could be enlarged. I spoke to the local state sponsor over the weekend. Uh, they request that we meet with them. So that means that we've, uh, we've gone from national to state. This is the highest priority project in the state of Mississippi. So they agreed to, uh, help us out. So once we register project, get the agreement, meet with them, we'll be underway. So we need to register the project and authorize all that down.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, um, our county administrator, Sheldon Vance, to register the project and get, and all the authorizations necessary so we can move forward.
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
Okay.
Alright, got a motion by Carl, second by Gerald. Uh, comment, I just want to comment a little there. Mike said that this is just, uh, a, a start. I really want to stress that, I, I don't think, uh, the Phil government gonna throw out twenty million dollars on a project and not see it through. This project, I think, going explode, uh, in the area where it's needed, right in the Gluckstat in the Canton area, owing to Canton. So we get this money and spend it right, I think we'll get several, uh, 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 millions of dollars down the line to complete this project and beautify this project.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, uh.
Mr. President, I would, I would like to say as well, and it's probably right time to say this, is that, um, I'd like to thank, uh, Mike for his, uh, contacts and, and friends that, uh, in the right places to make this happen. Because, uh, you just don't go get twenty million or twenty-five million dollars just right off the bat. So, uh, Mike, well job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
That's right. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Alright.
Okay.
Moving right along, anything else, Mr. Bank?
I think that's it for now.
Okay, well, I'm gonna jump down here to Supervisor Griffin.
Yeah, thank Supervisor Griffin.
Uh, when, uh, when we went to Washington, I happened to tag along, uh, didn't really want to go. But when you say dollar fine for, uh, Madison County, Petrie District fire, I put my mask on and got on that plane, went on up there. Uh, and we had a good meeting with the RCS, am I calling the right letters?
RUS.
RUS on broadband. Uh, as you know that, uh, we, uh, done a study in northeast Madison County on broadband. Uh, we got very little service or no service. RUS spoke with us, they, 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 uh, just about said, hey, you all gonna qualify for these funds. It called up, told us where to go, apply for these funds. It was a grant called the Reconnect Grant. And we are in the process of applying for that now. And I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Homer Wilson and his staff being so nice and taking the time to meet with us on broadband when we really were just up there on the watershed. So, uh, thank them. Uh, but there was something that we, some things that we supposed to been doing and we have. That was, uh, going forward with, uh, a plan. Madison County had been planning, so we was able to get ready to apply for this reconnect grant. But we as a county could not apply for it. Uh, there's a state law that keeping us from have, being able to apply for it and operate a broadband, uh, service in Madison County. We probably about the only county that is not, uh, able to apply for it. So we had to select a third party. And that was a committee formed, formed a couple, few months ago. I was on that committee, I think Gerald's on it, Mike, Shelton and Wagner, Tim, Tim. Uh, and before I go in, in it further, uh, now, let me go a little further. There, there were four proposals sent, uh, to this committee on us finding that third party. Uh, one kind of fell aside pretty quick. Uh, the other three was, uh, AT&amp;T, Comcast and Seafire. So, and Seafire kind of fell to the side. So there was two left, AT&amp;T and Comcast. And they running neck and neck. And I think Darren is here now telling us who probably won that contest. Darren, Darren, will you step up and count a minute or so? And I just want to share that both of these companies, uh, are good, sound companies and they put forth a good, solid proposal.
Good morning, uh, board. Uh, as previous to stated, uh, the committee did go through the evaluation process. They evaluated each, uh, proposal and the presentations done by the, uh, the top three companies. Uh, evaluated those, uh, companies based on the criteria that was included in the, um, the, um, request for proposals. And, uh, after tallying up the scores, uh, the total scores for each company, uh, out of the top three, Comcast, uh, came out as the, the top company based on the, uh, scoring criteria that was included in the, uh, request for proposals.
Okay. Alright, upon saying that, I would like to make a motion to authorize Attorney, County Administrator, uh, Wagner, Janier, to sit down with Comcast and come up in negotiation in a contract, uh, to serve this, uh, proposed area.
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
Alright, got a motion, uh, the cell, uh, second by Gerald. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. President, I probably, do we not need to put those, uh,
Scoring forms?
Score forms in the minutes as well?
We have them, they're, they're prepared, so we can make those available, yes, sir.
We need to put all four proposals in the minutes as well as those scoring, uh, documents.
Yeah.
You want to make that motion or?
I'll make that motion, let me put all that, all those, uh, scoring and information into the minutes.
And the proposals of the poll.
And the proposals also.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Motion by himself, second by Gerald, in our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I got it.
All opposed? Motion carry. Uh,
He's got a little bit more to say.
Right, go ahead.
Yes, one thing we just want to add, um, the reason why we're trying to go ahead and wanted to get this taken care of today, I think it's already been mentioned about, uh, the reconnect grant program. And so we wanted to make sure that, uh, the county was in position and had positioned themselves to take advantage of that, uh, of that grant opportunity once the, uh, the notice, uh, was published publicly. Uh, as we understand now, there's anticipation that at August, at the latest, uh, that notice will be published. And so we just wanted to make sure as, you know, the county cannot get into that business. So we had, one of the criteria for the county was to identify who the ISP, uh, would be to partner with the county and moving forward with this, with this effort. And that's something that the, uh, the grant, uh, requires. So that's another reason why we, uh, wanted to go ahead and try to take care of this as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
That grant is a twenty-five million, uh, opportunity.
Mr. President, I would, I would like to just say that, I know, you know, within the last five minutes, we made several motions and went over two, two things. But I want to tell you, there was a lot of legwork that's went into this to get it to this point. You know,
A lot.
With, uh, the attorney and administrator and Wagner and board members. And, uh, so it's, it, it's a lot, uh, to get to this point. Of course, we have, you know, another leg or two to go. But, uh, appreciate you, Darren with Wagner, to, uh, help us lead the way to get here to this point.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Alright. And, and those committees that were pointed for the watershed and the broadband, it ain't like they wasn't working. These, these committees really worked, really put in the man out. Uh, so I gotta thank both of the committees. And, uh, one more thing for, uh, uh, lead the broadband that, uh, I want to say, uh, on, on the proposal that we see, we receive one from Seafire that I was very, very disappointed in, just because it is based in Madison County. Uh, and, and, and the way they presented themselves at the, uh, at, when they came and did the presentation, uh, wasn't professional. So when you saying that you don't want to help out your own county, that is saying a lot to me. Uh, when you have business all over the state of Mississippi, uh, you based in the county here and, and you don't want to help it out, uh, I'm very disappointed, thank you. Moving right along.
Uh, Neil Schaefer.
Good morning.
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 Uh, Stan Wright with Neil Schaefer. Um, we have uh recently, you know, completed our uh, the transportation study, really basically an update that we did back in two thousand sixteen. Um, Jonathan Kaiser here with Kaiser Trafficking and Engineering. Is gonna kind of run you through, basically, one of the main objectives we had was kind of develop long-term and, long-term and short-term recommendations. Um, we, we'll try to be efficient and not take too much of your time. But with that, I'm gonna go work the laptop and let Jonathan take over.
Thanks, Stan. I'm Jonathan Kaiser with Kaiser Traffic and Engineering. This is, as Stan said, an update to the two thousand sixteen study, and Stan, if you'll flip to the next slide, please. This was the general study area of all the roadways and intersections that we looked at in the county. Go on to the next one, please. Keep, no, keep going to the um level of service table. Well, at, at that scale, it's a little hard to see, you might have to zoom in. But essentially what we found, we looked at several different intersections, several different roadway lengths. Um, Gluckstat Road from I-55 to Bozeman, um, Catlet, Yandale Road from fifty-one to Clarkdale Road Extension, Stribbling Road Extension between Catlet Road and Calhoun Station Parkway, were some of the roadways that were over capacity. Let me give them a hand with this. So, these are all the intersections that we looked at. Keep, keep, keep rolling. Go to the graphics, Stan. Keep going. To the color graphics, figure A-one. Keep going. So, a, as part of those recommendations, keep going. We came up with some options to help relieve. Keep going to figure A-one. Keep going. Keep going, right there. So, we came up with some short-term and long-term recommendations. Um, this particular one, Clarkdale Road Extension at Yandale Road was one of the intersections that met signal warrants with existing traffic. So, we came up with three options to basically um provide some relief to Yandale Road. Uh, one of them would be an extension of Clarkdale Road uh to Highway fifty-one, which would help alleviate some of the westbound traffic in the morning on Yandale Road at fifty-one. The AM peak hour westbound at Yandale and fifty-one was something in the neighborhood of, it was over nine hundred vehicles per hour for the highest hour, and there was a second hour that was about eight hundred and fifty vehicles per hour. So, it was over capacity, not just for the peak hour, but for two hours in the morning. So, providing some relief to Yandale Road was, was one of the options. So, this Clarkdale Road Extension was one concept. Go to the next one, please. And, and then an extension of Church Road was another concept. Church comes in at kind of a skewed angle to Highway fifty-one. Uh, northbound in the morning, there was a, a close to three hundred vehicles per hour making a northbound left on Church Road where there's no left turn lane currently. Um, this would provide a parallel route to Yandale Road connecting to Smith Car Road, um, which Smith Car is not uh really intended for a lot of traffic on it, but this would provide some relief. Several people are using Old Canton Road and Smith Car Road to go north to East Sowell Road to bypass the Yandale fifty-one intersection. So, an extension of Church Road would be a second option uh to Smith Car, and then the third option, next slide, please, is an extension of West Sowell Road over to Old Canton aligning with Cotton Blossom Road. So, this would probably be the most effective route as a parallel connection that would connect all the way from Highway forty-three with Cotton Blossom to the new I-55 Sowell Road interchange, um, as a parallel route to Yandale Road. Uh, would probably have the most effect on diverting traffic off of Yandale as an, uh, an accessible route getting to the interstate. Go to the next slide, please. So, another shorter-term option would be adding a westbound right turn lane uh on Yandale Road at Highway fifty-one. Um, it's a, it would be a pretty expensive uh project because there are a lot of utilities on the north side of Yandale currently between the fire station and fifty-one. Um, but for the amount of traffic, it was over a hundred vehicles per hour making that westbound right that's currently in the through lane. So, if, if you were to provide that right turn lane, then you would increase the capacity for the westbound through movement in the, in the morning. Next slide. One of the options which I understand you're moving forward with now was adding the left turn lane at the um elementary school on Yandale Road. Um, there's, there's no left turn lane currently, so that would help improve the circulation around the school. Go to the next one. And then another uh short-term option is to add channelized right turn lanes um at the intersection of Old Canton Road and Yandale Road. Alright, next slide. Um, one of the other considerations that we had was um a widening of Highway twenty-two uh up near the Amazon facility, um, from Calhoun Station Parkway to Varelia Road. There are, um, with the adjacent industrial park and the developments that are proposed in it, we feel like there's a good chance for the county to apply for an economic development highway grant to help provide that widening as the truck traffic and other traffic from the industrial park significantly increase the volumes uh in that section. Oh, and there's three of those. So, go on, keep going. One more. The Livingston-Burning Road, Cedar Hill Road intersection with Highway twenty-two, it, it has some very high-angle uh intersections with it and pretty significant horizontal curves in the alignment of Highway twenty-two. As the development increases in that area, we are recommending to flatten out those curves and make the intersections more conventional right-angle intersections. Next slide. Highway four sixty-three at Robinson Springs Road and Livingston Road, um, it's one of the highest crash rate intersections in the county. Um, Robinson Springs at Highway four sixty-three, um, there's no left turn lanes there. Um, significant traffic volumes, it's very difficult for people in Robinson Springs to get out in the morning. And Highway four sixty-three, when you have a lot of people stopped in a posted fifty-five mile an hour uh speed limit area, there are a lot of um westbound or northbound rear-end crashes in that section. So, um adding left turn lane and then a continuous right turn lane down to Livingston Road uh would significantly improve circulation in the mornings and the afternoons. Next slide. At the adjacent Fairfield subdivision, uh, I know there's been a lot of interest at the Fairfield Drive intersection with four sixty-three. The middle school traffic backs up and blocks that intersection in the mornings. So, extending the left turn lane from the middle school past the Fairfield Drive intersection is recommended, which would help people turning in and out of that subdivision. Having a center turn lane like that allows people to not have to have, that are leaving the subdivision to not have to have a gap in both directions at the same time. Get a gap in northbound traffic, get into the center lane. Then they get a gap in southbound traffic and, and can merge in without having to have a simultaneous gap in both directions. Next slide.
Would full laning of four sixty-three to, from fifty-five to twenty-two help that?
A- absolutely, it would. Um, five-laning or four-lane divided would, would do that, yes. That, that would also serve the subdivision well, is that they, they have difficulty getting out in the mornings with the heavy uh southbound traffic on four sixty-three.
It would help tremendously, it'd sound like.
Yes. It, the, the left turn lane extension would be a, a shorter-term improvement that would be a little less costly, but.
Band-aid more like, more.
Yes, sir. Correct. Well, one, once the um Reunion Parkway interchange and uh Reunion Parkway extension are connected to I-55, we feel like that's gonna provide a lot of relief in that area that you won't have quite as high demand in front of Fairfield and the middle school, that people that have the option to go directly to the interstate along Reunion Parkway would choose that route rather than four sixty-three in front of Fairfield and the middle school.
And, and that option to combine would be tremendous.
Would significantly improve the capacity.
Growth and everything is in there, and just every, every year, it's more and more cars on there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, this is Gluckstat Road at four sixty-three with the development that's underway out there now. There's the existing traffic volumes at four sixty-three and Gluckstat meet signal warrants. There's a need for left turn lanes on four sixty-three also. Next slide. Uh, four sixty-three at Main Street, um, this is a concept where currently the three southbound lanes on four sixty-three, the third lane ends at Crawford Street and not at Main Street. So, this shows with a minor modification to four sixty-three, um, you could have that third lane drop at Main Street that most of the people that are in that third lane either are trying to race to get in front of you or are not aware that the lane drops at Crawford Street. Um, adding a second uh westbound left turn lane from Main Street onto four sixty-three, that intersection backs up uh at least to the always stop, particularly during peak hours, and as there's more development coming in, adding a second lane uh on Main Street for the left turn. You've got two receiving lanes on four sixty-three, so you could double your capacity of traffic getting onto four sixty-three from Main Street every cycle. Next slide. Um, Gluckstat Road uh from Bozeman to Calhoun Station Parkway, we had restriped a few years back, um, taking that center lane where it wasn't needed and turning it into the second eastbound lane. And that's worked very well to Bozeman Road, but, but west of Bozeman Road, there's a center turn lane with, with no development on either side. So, we're recommending restriping that second lane to have a second eastbound lane west of Bozeman Road um to help alleviate some of the traffic queues.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan, what, uh, just ballpark, I know that we can restripe Gluckstat right there, but we can also restripe Catlet to add a, a dual turn lane, is that correct?
That's correct. That Catlet Road runs split-phasing north-south, and so currently it's striped as a single left turn lane and a shared through right. Um, if you just change the striping out there, uh, add another arrow on that uh through shared right to make it a shared left through right, um, and put the cat tracks between the two left turn lanes with striping, you could double the capacity of the southbound left turn in the morning because you've got two receiving lanes east of Bozeman.
Just through striping?
Just the striping modifications. You wouldn't have to modify the signal.
So, Carl could get to work faster in the morning?
That would do it.
I go north.
Oh, man.
He would be going backwards.
Can you, can you, can you work with Tim on getting into cost estimate for the, the Gluckstat striping and the Catlet striping?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, next slide, Calhoun Station Parkway at Gluckstat Road. Uh, this intersection, the northbound movement off of D's Connector is a shared through right turn lane, and, and you don't have many through movements, and you have a whole lot of dedicated right turn movements. And a single three, through vehicle stops and blocks all the right-turning traffic, and that causes some, some issues during peak hour. So, adding a dedicated right turn lane would help alleviate that problem at that intersection. Next slide. Gluckstat Road at Dewise, you, recently you have improved Dewise Road. Um, here you've got Dewise and Providence Drive uh for the subdivision to the east there. Uh, both of those developments, uh, and let's see, north on Dewise Road, you've got six hundred acres being developed in there. Um, the southbound left turn in the morning, again, you've got a heavy volume of traffic on Gluckstat Road. They have to have a simultaneous gap in both directions. If you provide a center turn lane, that allows them to make that left turn in a two-stage movement.
Now, do you think we have enough room to do this primarily with striping?
This, this, you would have to add a, a lane, so you have to widen the road on both, both sides to do that.
Could we squeeze in a right turn lane right there?
That's, that's one of the things that we were recommending as a right turn lane there also, and that's something that we have to look at what the available right-of-way is and, and whether or not we'd have to acquire right-of-way uh in, in that area, but it's something we can look at. Next slide. And then this was just a general concept about uh looking at the area south of Gluckstat Road, um, east of Bozeman, west of I-55, with the Reunion Parkway interchange coming in. As that property develops, we're just recommending that you include some cross-access in, in the planning and permitting of that, so that all of that property doesn't have to just dump onto Gluckstat Road. You provide some additional outlet to the south with Reunion Parkway and the capacity that it's gonna have as a four-lane divided facility. So, those, those were the high-level, short-term, long-term recommendations uh that came out of this study.
So, um, for District One, is there any way you can give me, I don't need a whole lot of fancy schmancy stuff, but a priority list, like Sheila, if you want to do this, you should start with this road first and then that road, so that there's some kind of plan, uh, at least for me in District One. Would you do that for me?
Sure, I can work with Tim on.
Yeah.
On that. Okay.
Alright, any, any, uh, you know, question?
Yeah, um, when we met, we discussed a project at um Park Place and four sixty-three.
Yeah, yes, that, that, that's correct. That was, and that was something that was in the two thousand sixteen study. Um, and, and you're right, it is still a viable project where you go from two lanes to five lanes across Park Place, and you have um a channelized right turn on Park Place that people, because of the striping and how it's constructed, people don't use it as a, as a continuous movement they typically yield, but you could modify the um islands in that intersection and double the capacity that gets southbound on four sixty-three every cycle, yes.
Well, I'm hoping that in the future, after we met, I had a discussion with Executive Director of MDOT, and you obviously put together PDFs for all this. I sent it to him, and we discussed the projects, and now I'm hoping that we can go down there and discuss it with him in person.
Sure.
And, and if we could get, is there any way to get loose cost estimates together on some of this stuff? Okay, alright.
We've got cost estimates on most of the projects we've mentioned.
Okay.
I don't, I have my own decision there. We can get that.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, appreciate you uh putting this together, because uh same thing y'all did in two thousand sixteen, I think, for us, and, and we've worked on it and got a lot of those projects done, and same as this one.
Yes, sir. There's a lot of growth and there's a lot of need and, you know, paying, paying attention to the traffic congestion and where your issues are is what's gonna keep things growing and keep people wanting to move here.
Yeah, so definitely appreciate y'all putting this together and.
Thank you.
And the board members is just gonna have to decide on per project, you know, what's best.
Yes, sir.
You know, because there's nothing but money that can solve all these issues.
That's right. Well, and we're available to meet with you if you have other questions or things that come up. Just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Right. Moving right along. Tim, you up next?
Good morning, board. The only item I have today is the uh final plat for Avondale Estates. This is a, uh, it's twelve lots on twenty-three acres, and there's no public infrastructure associated with it. It's gonna be bordered by two existing roads.
Motion?
Second.
Uh, motion by the cell, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
I, I was wrong a second ago. I, I have an extra request. Um, the engineering department's requesting that the board authorize us to advertise for the relocation of the thirty-inch waterline that serves Nissan in support of the Reunion Two project.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Patrick Grove, where we?
We are getting quotes on it right now.
Getting quotes on it?
Well, we're getting one quote from our term bidder.
Okay. Now, how long you think this gonna take?
I would hope to have it in the next day or two.
Have you been out there on the road?
Not recently, I haven't.
Sheriff, would, uh, you, you, if, if, y'all have any problems patrolling out there?
There's, there's one place there just off of uh Old Yazoo City, within a half a mile there that it's, you can't even get around it hardly without a four-wheel drive. It's that deep.
Okay.
And water in the road.
Long as it's been out there.
It's right, it's right there where somebody's coming out, right there at somebody's driveway. Looks like big trucks have been coming out there.
Farm equipment.
Is it farm equipment? Yeah, it's, it's torn up bad. Yeah, it's torn up bad.
Been totally neglected. Okay. Well, we need to get something.
We'll get it taken care of this week.
And y'all need to take a look out there. We need to get it where it's passable until we can get the contract in.
I'll go out there today.
Okay, thank you.
One more time, Tim, before you go. I see that you got that bridge moved up on South Spring.
Yes, sir.
It's something to see. Solid eyes. Have you been up there to go again?
I've seen it.
Is there a crane to lift something there?
They're going to do it with two track hoes.
Two track hoes?
One on each end, yes, sir. And we're waiting on rebar right now. Rebar should be here this week, and they're going to build the footings on each end, and then we'll set it on those.
Okay. When you set it down, it's there forever.
Yeah, it will be there.
It will, all right.
Of course, we're going to put handrails on it as well.
Yeah, do that. Thank you. Scott, you up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I got two quick things. Number 49 Milltown Place, Phase One, this preliminary plat, Highway 16 West and Green Acres Drive, property zone APURD, since Supervisor District, 31 lots.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item, preliminary plat, Mill Bridge of Caroline, between Bridgewater Drive and Pembroke Cove, Pembroke Circle, property zone, planned unit development, Supervisor District Four.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That is all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Attorney, Mike Estes, anything?
Mr. President, I've got one question. Mike, is there anything you need from the board today to expedite getting those Gluckstat police officers, those four vehicles?
First off, we've got to identify the vehicles that will be transferred to them. Right now, that has not been done, and then we'll bring it back for the board to approve those vehicles as surplus, set a value, and then hopefully work a deal with City of Gluckstat.
Sheriff, is there, can you help us identify the vehicles?
We're having to replace them one by one, obviously, and there's no way for me to know which ones are serviceable and usable for their purposes until we get to that point.
Okay, okay.
So as soon as I get to the point where those vehicles are sufficient, I'll be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Shelton, you next.
Mr. President, board members, I'd like to draw your attention to item number 51, which is a memorandum of agreement associated with the CDBG application that we have in. I have had a question regarding this, and the answer to the question is, it's my understanding that we would have to use ARPA funds to be the local match, or West Madison Utility would have to come up with the local match. So my anticipation is that you are expecting a 10% match for this. That's the minimum match, which would be 82,500, which would either have to come from ARPA or come directly from West Madison Utility, and that would be in exchange for applying for a $742,000 grant for sewer rehab, sewer pipe rehab. So if you are interested in continuing along, there is a executive officer certification and a cover letter that needs to be signed by the Board President, as well as a resolution offering the 10% match for the CDBG application.
I can make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next item on the agenda is acknowledging a letter from the Camden Fire Protection District requesting a millage increase from two to four mills. Remember, as I'd indicated in a prior meeting, that this will have to be advertised before this could be put into place, but the Camden Fire Protection District is advising you of their request to change their millage in the upcoming budget year.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second by Trey. You're hoping to hear me. No, okay. I'm gonna just.
Second.
Carl got a question, and I'm just asking this question out loud because I agree with why it's not going up to eight, and I think, Mike, we can't go up on millage that far.
At one time, no.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think longer if you jump up that app at once, I think it's got to be.
Yeah, we're not.
Implemented in a incremental way.
All right. I made most second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, item number 53 are a couple of personnel matters that did not get in for the agenda timeline, and in addition to the three that are here, let's see, that's one for the detention center, two for the detention center, three for the detention center. I have a fourth one that has come in this morning for Tristan Zeri hired as a, to be hired as a detention officer, so that would be four personnel matter items for the detention center.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, Mr. President, in the consent agenda today, you approved travel for the board members to two meetings, one being the Connected Community Conference in Stoneville, which is Wednesday of this week. So on your desk, I have agenda item number 11. If you want to be registered for Wednesday's meeting in Stoneville, I need to know that this afternoon so I can make those plans. The other item is to the Rural Infrastructure Summit, which is in Cleveland. It's marked Agenda Item 12. This requires a hotel stay. It was approved on Consent Agenda today, so I need to know if you desire to go to that. And then, of course, MAS Convention, that was previously approved. We need to make sure we have hotel reservations. In conjunction with the MAS Annual Conference, I also put on your desk a ballot for trustees for the insurance trust program that you are a member of. I'm giving you that, not for action today, but for consideration at next meeting, where you'll need to vote for up to six board members.
Shelton, that's, all six are on here, right?
Yes, sir. Those are the six, the nominee, according to this letter, nominations have been closed, and you get to vote for up to six of those people. You don't have to vote for all six, but you could vote for all six.
Mr. President, I did make a motion to vote for all six.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I'm going to give this to your clerk because every supervisor has to sign this ballot.
What did Gerald do? Do I lobby fair that meeting set? Do they?
Not yet, but they should this week, though. I'll find out the date tomorrow.
All right. You may have to go up here. Yeah, I don't want to not register and then we don't get to meet.
Yeah.
I don't know where the heck Stoneville is.
We're just working around that schedule if we need to.
You know where Stoneville is? I know where the road is.
It runs off what road?
It's Leland. Leland, I said Leland.
Is it Leland?
Can't miss it.
That's on, that's on June the 2nd and 3rd.
Stoneville is this Wednesday.
Speaking of 18.
Cleveland is the 2nd and 3rd.
Second and 3rd. We're just working around that media.
Yeah.
That take.
I might have to make this drive to Stoneville.
Yeah.
All right. Where was it? Oh, comptroller in the sun.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item I have for you are the budget amendments and the end of fund cash transfers.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
In addition to number 55, the claims docket, I also ask approval to pay the Center for Government and Community Development $50 for Amy Root's designation. It's what's laid on your desk.
Move. All right. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then number 56 is the approval of the payroll docket for May 11th.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And number 57 is the approval of the Fleet Corps claim docket.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Carl. All in favor? All opposed? Motion car, motion carried. Ronnie Lot?
And now, excuse me, I have one additional item.
I'm overlooking, I'm looking at the agenda.
One item we received late is the approval of the Pen and Zoning Commissioners Meeting for payment for them for meeting on April 14th.
Motion, second. Motion and a second. Gerald?
Gerald.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else?
The sound.
Okay. Mr. Lot?
Nothing, Mr. Vice President.
Sheriff?
Just a couple of things. I'd like to ask the board to acknowledge inmate meal log I provided your clerk for the minutes, please.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I think we've already done this, but just out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to ask the board for approval for travel and related expenses for myself to the Sheriff's Conference, June 6th through 10th of this year.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, Tim, that Neil Schaefer road plan, can, is there any way you put that in a PDF and get it to the mayors, the related mayors are out there, the ones that have, I know Gluckstat's got some improvements, maybe the City of Madison, Reginald Florissant, get it out to them so they can take a look at it?
Okay, yeah, it's in a PDF format, so we can get it to them.
Thank you.
All right, that was the sheriff. Old bid. New bid. New executive session, attorney? Most for a jury. All right. I move. You into a jury on what day?
Till June 6th, 9:00 AM.
June 6th, 9:00 AM? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? June 6th?
All right. Good meeting, good meeting.
Any time there's new executive session.
It's a good meet. It's a swamp. I mean, it's been totally neglected.
Church back around.
Yeah, from St. James Church.